Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. I'm Jayman Kara, currently serving as chair. To my right is Vice Chair Josh Neely, and member JP Boucher, member Robert Shaw, and alternate Joseph Patry. Because we only have four full members of the board, Mr. Patry will be participating and voting on all of the cases. And hopefully, nobody has to accuse himself or herself. So overall, tonight, we have five cases. We have a mix of variances and special exceptions. So a special exception is a use that's allowed in the zoning ordinance under certain conditions. A variance is a request to deviate from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And that can only be granted if the board finds that five criteria are met. So it must be within the public interest. It must be consistent with the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Granting the variance would have to result in substantial justice. Granting the variance can't diminish surrounding properties. And the fifth criterion is owing to some special condition in the land or in the property, denying the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. So the way the process works, or our order of businesses, I will read the case into the record, and then the applicant will be invited to come forward up to the podium. You know, each person speaking should state his name or her name and address for the record. And then you have up to 15 minutes to present your case. Following that, and of course, the board may answer, you know, ask questions during that time. Then following that, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the application can come forward and has up to five minutes to present, you know, to state whatever they wish to the board. Following that, anybody who has questions, concerns, or opposition may come up and also has up to five minutes to address the board. And then, if necessary, or and if the applicant wishes, the applicant has up to five minutes to provide any rebuttal. And then finally, at the very end, one person who has questions, concerns, or opposition, if there are any, can come back and gets the final word. So overall, you know, we, it's a formal process, but we hope nobody feels intimidated. I think we're a pretty nice and friendly board. So I think with that, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Patry?
Present.
So we're all here. And also, to my left is Carter Falk, who is the Deputy Planning Manager of the city. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
That I'm going to go ahead, and I am going to attempt to read the first case into the record. This is the application of Louis Babaji, N. G. Tari, and Zioxi Oyong, I'm hoping, I'm sure that wasn't right, owners, Brian Sullivan, applicant, 53 Legacy Drive, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory dwelling unit, an in-law apartment, in the basement of an existing home. That's in the R-18 zone in Ward 9. Would the applicant like to come forward? How badly did I butcher the name?
I was hoping you'd nail it. You nailed it perfectly. I mean, I have no idea.
There you go.
I call a she-show, she-show.
There you go.
Yeah, we're putting an in-law apartment in the basement.
If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address?
Brian Sullivan, the general contractor for Champagne Construction, and they're my client. And we're gonna put an in-law apartment in the basement. Their family comes from China a lot, and they'd like to utilize their space. And that's as easy as it gets. I believe I've met other criteria on the application.
And we did note that the affidavit that is required is signed. You had a chance to review that, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's, you know, we made other criteria.
All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely?
The driveway looks relatively short, so you can easily fit two cars outside. Are the two garage doors, I mean, usable for cars to make sure we're not parking on the street?
Yes, 100 percent.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
And I'm pretty sure I understood it accurately from the drawing and all, but that, that slider that's been added, that's on the side of the house, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, anything else you'd like to add? If not, you're free to have a seat.
I think we're good.
Yes. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody in the audience with any questions, concerns, or opposition? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw?
Very straightforward. I don't see any issues. Definitely will support this.
I would agree. Any other thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
Oh, now I get to try to say the name. So for the owners, Luis Babaji, N. G. Tari, and Xiao Oxy Oyong, owners, and Brian Sullivan, applicant, at 53 Legacy Drive, Sheet B, Lot 3171. The request, again, is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement of the existing home. This is in the R-18 zone, Ward 9. The requested use, as noted in the description, is listed as a special exception in the use matrix, so that first criteria is satisfied by that. There is no evidence that the requested use will create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, this being just the standard accessory dwelling unit being added. Likewise, there's no evidence that there would be any overload of any public water, drainage, sewer systems, or any other municipal systems regarding the implementation of this ADU. The special regulations are fulfilled. The affidavit regarding the, I forget if it's 9, or whatever the number of criteria are regarding the special exception, I guess it's up to 11 now, but although one is not actually, it's just reserved. So those criteria have been testified to being met, so that is taken care of. And there's no evidence that there'll be any impact or impairment to the integrity or be out of character with the district and immediate neighborhood in which this home is located, nor be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the residents of the city. So therefore, I move to approve this special exception.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Patry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Your application is, your special exception is passed unanimously. Just be advised, and this will be true for all cases, that there is a 30-day window of appeal. So you are free to, you know, proceed at your own risk, but just keep that in mind. Seems unlikely since nobody spoke in opposition. Yes, all set. All right, the next case is the application of Lori Golos and Brian Connolly, 7 New Hampshire Avenue, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach eight feet six inches into the 25-foot required rear yard setback to replace an eight-foot by 10-foot deck with a 10-foot by 24 and 6-inch deck. This is in the R-9 zone in Ward 1. Would the applicant like to step forward? And again, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Brian Connolly, 7 New Hampshire Ave.
All right. And so, tell us what you'd like to do.
So the current deck, the, that eight-by-10 deck, is starting to rot. My wife's foot fell through one of the deckboards. So we're looking to, originally, we were looking to just tear down the old deck, build the new deck. When we submitted the permit application, that's when we realized the 25-foot setback. The current deck is already within that 25-foot setback. Someone 20, 30 years ago had already built a porch and a deck off the back of the house without any permits or anything already. So basically, we're looking to just take down the old rotting, unsafe deck and just kind of make a backyard space that's usable for me, my wife, our new son, someplace to spend the night.
Any questions from the board? And did you look at alternatives of possibly making it smaller? Kind of how did you arrive at this size?
So the, the house is 26 feet from the property line. So anything built off the back is gonna get into, in that setback. So we kind of figured, take the opportunity, if we have to go for a variance, let's make a more usable space to fit maybe a patio set, a grill out there. The eight-by-10 is a little crowded right off the back of the house. So the old deck goes eight feet off the new one, 10. So we're only, we're only going two more feet than the existing one. Obviously, it's, it was built illegally to begin with, so that's why we're going the proper route.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like to add? And feel free to have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody in the audience who has any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw?
I certainly think that the 10-foot request for the depth of the deck is, is still relatively small when it comes to a lot of decks, so I don't think it's, it's an overask by any means. But also, then, the fact that there, this was existing, there has been, you know, this long history of a deck there before, I don't think the two feet is going to be a significant noticeable difference. And it's, it's a very reasonable use, so those factors all contribute to me feeling that this is easily something that I can support.
Other thoughts? Mr. Neely?
Yeah, the applicant also noted it's a safety issue, you know, the current one there, they've stepped through, so it's gotta go. You know, many, many houses in Nashua have decks, that's a standard thing, as Mr. Shaw was talking about, 10 feet doesn't get, it doesn't give you really a lot of room to spread out. So if I was doing this, I would also ask for a larger deck as well, so I think it's well within the, the level of reason to ask for that. And also, at the end of the day, you know, it was eye-opening to me that the house itself is 26 feet from the property line. So, you know, the applicant stated that, you know, we're already asking for the variance, let's just go for the, for the larger one. I would probably do the same thing. So, so for those reasons, I'm in favor of this, this application.
I also like to add that, if you look at the houses in the neighborhood, they are typically the same, they're positioned the same way. So this is not in a normal, it's, it's typical of the neighborhood, so again, anybody who would be looking to put a deck would always be in that setback.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, you know, a deck is a reasonable use in general, and this is a, you know, still a relatively modest deck. So yeah, I support the application as well. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Patry?
Sure. I move that we approve the request of Lori Golos and Brian Connolly for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach eight by, eight feet six inches into the 25-foot required rear yard setback to replace an eight-by-10 deck with a 10-by-24 by 6 deck. We find that the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the use will not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance, the, the encroachment of the deck into the setback is minimal, and this will not alter the character of the neighborhood, it will improve safety by allowing the applicant to build a more safe structure. We find that the proposed use will observe the spirit of the variance of the ordinance because the use will not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance or alter the essential of the character, given the de minimis expansion of the, of the deck into, into the setback. We find that substantial justice would be done to the owner by granting the variance because there would be no harm to the public interest and would increase safety. We find that the proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties, we didn't have any testimony in this, but in all likelihood, it will increase the property values of the property because it will have a more attractive and safe deck. And we find that the, there are special conditions such that literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because the impact of the deck and to the setback would be de minimis, and there's no reasonable relationship between the ordinance and the, and its application in this particular situation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Your variance request passes unanimously. I think, as you heard before, though, just be mindful, you are able to go ahead and proceed with your project, but there is a 30-day window of appeal. Thank you. You're all set. Next case is the application of Jeffrey Todd and Michelle Elizabeth Colburn, 3 Bryant Road, requesting a special exception for a minor encroachment from Land Use Code Section 190-16, E. 3A, to encroach five feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct a roof over an existing attached deck. It's in the R-9 zone in Ward 8. Are the applicants present this evening? Like to approach? Just please state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Colburn, 3 Bryant Road.
So feel free to tell us about your project and why we should grant you variance.
We spend a lot of time, families come in, and we spend a lot of time on the deck. We had a gazebo up, out there. Just everybody seems to be crushing into that gazebo, so we want to put a roof over that deck so that we're protected from the elements and we can enjoy that space throughout the year.
Anything else you'd like to add? No? Any questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
So there's no change to the existing deck itself?
No.
Just, is the roof going to cover the entire deck?
Yes.
Okay. And it's just, basically, there's no extra height to this roof? It's, I mean, it's basically just whatever pitch you need to have proper runoff, but it's not like there's any extra storage up there or any sort of extra part of things, so it's literally just essentially a weather cover type of effect.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, anything you'd like to add? Feel free to have a seat. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody in the audience with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Mr. Boucher?
I'm going to support this application. I think it's pretty straightforward. He made it very clear what, exactly what he was looking to do and why. Again, it's an existing deck, and one of the things I noticed about property is very private. So again, I don't, this is not something that would be intruding, or the use of this would not be intruding on any of the neighbors. So again, as noted, I think one of the biggest things is very private, I don't think you'd even know it's there if we wanted to hear it.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I agree on the privacy. I mean, you can't see this deck when you're in front of the house. I drove around, too, I think it's Emerson behind, you can't see it. This is not going to affect anybody, so I'm very much in favor of this application.
I would agree, and, you know, putting a roof over the existing deck to get more use out of it is, you know, certainly perfectly reasonable, and obviously, we've had no concerns expressed by any of others. Any other thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for, for Jeffrey, excuse me, Jeffrey Todd and Michelle Elizabeth Colburn, owners of 3 Bryant Road, Sheet B, Lot 654, requesting a special exception for a minor encroachment from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Section E, Subsection 3, Subsection A, to encroach five feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct a roof over an existing attached deck, to the R. 2 zone, Ward 8. We find that the requested use is listed in the special, in the, in the special exception. We find that the use is listed in the use matrix, as just indicated in the advertisement, and is permitted, is permitted in this, in this zone. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system, to such an extent that the requested use, or any developed use in the immediate area, or any other area of the city, will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or their general welfare. And there are no special regulations that have to be fulfilled. The requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the residents of the city. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Neely. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? The application passes unanimously. I think, as you've heard, there is a 30-day window of appeal, but that is, you know, seems to be pretty unlikely. So you may proceed if you wish. Thank you. Next application is Ton Weir LLC, owners Ralph DiBacco, applicant, at 171 Kinsley Street, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 97, to convert use of property from an approved use of a medical doctor's office to a general office use. That's in the R.A. zone in Ward 6. Is there somebody here to speak for the applicant? Again, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Ralph DiBacco. I'm here with my family, my daughter, my son-in-law, and my son Kyle. We're purchasing the building. We're moving our business from Lowell, Mass. up here. We've moved our living, we live in Merrimack, New Hampshire now, and this is right smack in the middle of our service area, so it's a perfect location for our business, right near our main suppliers, FW Web, Granite Group. So we're just looking to run our family, you're looking at my whole staff there, our family plumbing, heating, and cooling business there. I don't think we're going to affect anything. The building that we're going to be buying looks a lot like the building we have in Lowell, but this is in a nicer, a better location for us commute-wise back and forth to work. And I don't think we're going to affect any, any office, you know, or anybody, residences in the, in the, in the area. We're currently in a building area that's a mixed-use property now, next door to residents and businesses, so it's a very similar situation. We're not going to have high traffic of patients coming in and out of the building every day. We're going to show up in the morning to do our job and then leave in the afternoon when it's time to go home. We're going to, you know, keep up the property, obviously, because it's, you know, we want to look professional and, you know, I don't think there's any devalue. The only value we'll be bringing is, you know, keeping, you know, a property nice, growing our business, adding to the community, you know, places, you know, we'll be able to hire people from the, from the local area and things like that, so I don't think there's anything that we would do that would be awful, that wouldn't be done in a doctor's office. One thing I may not need is all the exam sinks in every office.
All right, anything you'd like to add?
I have some photos, if you want to see what, what we have, so you can say, oh, this is how we run this business now. We've done some pre-essential heat area, and there are other plumbing businesses, hatch plumbing.
Sir, just so you know, we need you to be talking into the mic, otherwise, we don't get it recorded, so.
I prepared a formal document, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure how I had to do this, so I prepared a formal statement, if I could have approached this.
Absolutely.
Here's, here's my, this is my existing business. There you go. There's our presentation to show our existing used building, that's the same kind of building, just in a different location. This puts us, like, in a nice halfway point, so it'll help us traveling back and forth from work every morning.
Is that a statement that you wanted to read into the record or for us to just have it as part of the record?
Sure, if you'd like me to read it, I can read it aloud.
Entirely up to you.
All right, this is now the formal one. We respectfully request the zoning board of appeals to approve our application for the change of use from commercial property at 171 Kinsley Street from a doctor's office to a general office. Our family business was established in 1993 by myself and my wife as a small family-run operation out of our home, and we have steadily grown over the past three decades into a respected regional service provider. Today, the next generation of our family, our son Michael and our daughter Emily Lavalley and our son-in-law Kyle, are actively involved in preparing to take over the company as my wife and I, you know, plan to retire in the next 10 years. This continuity with my kids will ensure the core values of our strong work ethic and our commitment to our community to remain a cornerstone in the business for years to come. We plan to use the bill, the building for general office functions, including reception, call-taking, dispatching, and employee training. Light storage of miscellaneous hand tools inside of the building that are essential to our fieldwork, but we don't need in the truck every single day. There'll be no retail traffic, no loud operation, no alteration that would impact the quiet or professional character of that neighborhood. In all of our years in different locations, since I started the business in 93, we've never received any complaints from the two other locations that we formerly leased, one in North Chumsford for 10 years, and then another one in Chumsford Center for 14 years, and then since 2019, we've been in the building that's in the picture there in Lowell, and we've consistently invested in our property and improving the spaces that we've occupied, and we take pride in being a responsible business to our neighbors. And our recent growth and relocation from, from Chumsford to Merrimack, and as we're expanding and planning growth to better serve Southern New Hampshire alongside of our greater Lowell-area clients, the Kinsley Street location offers an ideal, situated just minutes from our home in Merrimack and close proximity to our three major suppliers, FW Web, Granite Group, and Wind Supply. We ask that this, this change is a low-impact transition that will allow an existing commercial property to continue serving the city in a professional capacity. Our family business will bring value to the Nashua area by investing in and maintaining the property, supporting local vendors, and creating steady local employment opportunities. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
I think from everything you've described, and if I understand it correctly, there's no, there's not going to be any, like, actual significant storage of any sort, because you're using distributors, like you noted, there'll be maybe small hand tools that are kept.
Yeah.
But, but otherwise, everything's pretty much on the trucks.
Everything's in the trucks and out in the field.
So you're not going to be having deliveries there or any of those kinds of things?
I mean, occasionally, you get a FedEx or UPS thing like everybody, but other than that, we don't, we don't order materials into the shop. It's, this is literally a dispatch office, payroll.
Even though it's a plumbing business.
It's a plumbing business. This is the business side of the plumbing.
Right. The reality is, this is really just the office part of the function of that.
Exactly.
As far as any of the rest of the stuff, that's not, that's happening because of your, you know, the relationships and the way you...
We, we serve residential clients. We do the work in your home. You'd call us, we, we're not doing the work in the office, we come to your home to do the, to do, to do our work. So it's not, this is literally an office, to be used as an office.
Okay. I just wanted to, I felt pretty certain, I understood, I just wanted to clarify it and have it, you know, clear on the record as well.
I honestly, when I, I mean, I know the building has been on the market for over a year. I was buying an office building. I only, I came into the zoning board to find out what the setbacks were as far as putting a fence in, you know? And they said, oh, you're, you're a plumber? And I'm like, yeah, it's, I need an office building. And they're like, well, that's a doctor's office. I'm like, well, it's an office. Well, you need a variance, so I said, oh, okay. And I hope it goes through, because we've already packed up our current building and the paperwork is done, and the, we're moving in on the 30th.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Boucher?
And again, I think, I think I understand correctly, there is, there won't be any, employees don't go there and pick up vans and all that. They take all their vans home, or whatever vehicles you use.
There might be two, one or two there.
Right. Right, coming in to check and whatever, but this is not a place where there's going to be a lot of in and out in the morning and the afternoon with, with work vehicles.
As far as coming in in the morning, you know, you're the office staff.
Yeah, I'm talking about work vehicles.
Yeah.
They won't, this is not like a business where they've got to come and report in and leave.
No, no. There's only, you're looking at the crew right here.
Right, right. Yeah, just want to make clear because, you know, sometimes neighbors will get...
We're not going to have a fleet of 100 trucks parked there.
Right. Sometimes neighbors will get nervous about that, so I just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, that's not...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anything you'd like to add?
I, I certainly hope you approve it right now because we have the phone scheduled to go in.
Okay. Well, thank you, and you can be seated.
Thank you.
Is there anybody, and should you like to speak in favor of this application? Please.
Hello?
Again, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Gillian Gracielli. I live at 425 Teresa Street in Fitchburg. So I work, I'm a family friend, and I work on a professional level with Ralph. I know his family. I'm very close with them. I've, I've been helping him sell his property in Lowell and look for a new property. As far as professionally, this will bring, you know, tax value to Nashua. It'll be a thriving business. It will be, you know, supplementing the area. He works with a lot of veterans and offers a lot of different programs for them, so there's a lot of bonuses to it. We looked very closely at the property and would it be compatible? Would it be overstepping bounds? And we feel as though it sat vacant for a little bit, and it's very similar. There's just no injections, so that's all. No doctors. I, the thing with the doctors is that a lot of people are doing telemed or urgent care or just going straight into the hospital, so you don't see a lot of private practices like we did five, 10 years ago. So to have it sitting there, you know, it could potentially sit longer as well, so. But I can speak to how beautiful the property is in Lowell. It's very clean. He's very meticulous. It's a, it's a very nice property. I can't see it do anything but add value.
Terrific. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else you'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anybody who'd like to speak with any questions, concerns, or
I'm David Ceteria, 25 Marker Street. I live, my driveway sits almost adjacent to the driveway of this piece of property that we're discussing, all right? Since the hospital at that intersection there is a very dangerous intersection because of a lot of ambulance traffic going both Kinsley Street and on Marker Street. The driveway that comes out of that property is almost at that intersection. We already have enough traffic there as it is. I don't, I'm concerned about if there's going to be some more, more problems with a lot of his vehicles coming out of that driveway. I know he doesn't want to, he's not, he's just running a dispatch center there, but how many vehicles ought to come out of that particular driver that's the only driver that comes out of that property that sits almost on the intersection of the hospital? Now, I've, I've lived there all my life, which is almost, that driveway is almost adjacent across the street where my house is, and has been a lot of accidents in that corner, too. You're adding a driveway, a business in this area on that corner, it could have caused some more problems in that corner. Again, there's a lot of ambulance traffic coming in on Marker Street and on, on Kinsley Street from not only local ambulances, but out-of-town ambulances. Is, is, there's a lot of traffic there, especially at night as well. So I'm concerned about the traffic. There is no children in that neighborhood that I could see playing around, but there's still a lot of cars activity throughout the day on those intersection with Kinsley Street, especially a lot of cars coming from the hospital. He exits his, that driveway, it's going to come in conjunction with that intersection that's there. That's, that driveway sits so close to the intersection, is it going to cause a problem? I, I don't know. But when the doctor's office, which is, which is, which is being used, was used, used a year ago before it was become vacant, he had, only had two or three cars in that lot, and it, and it, and it didn't seem to have caused a problem at all. I don't know what kind of business, he's running a plumbing business. Is he just a dispatch center, or is he going to have more activity coming out of that driveway where it's going to cause a concern for that intersection again? There's, there's been a lot of problems on that corner sometimes. It's one of the dangerous intersections in Nashua with the hospital there all the time. You've got a lot of traffic, and that's the main driveway coming out of St. Joe's Hospital. That's, with the lights there, and you get Kinsley Street, which is a one-way intersection there with two-way street, a marker street, and there's a lot of traffic there all the time. So I don't know if that's going to be a concern where that driveway is located so close to that intersection. At one time, I believe there was another access to St. Joseph Drive on the other side, but that was cordoned off, and it just, it was just a driveway to Marker Street where it comes out. Even though it's, it's labeled as 171 Kinsley Street, the driveway actually comes out onto Marker Street very close to that intersection. And that's what concerns me about causing more traffic problems or concerns of, I don't know much traffic he's going to generate coming out of that, that driveway.
Okay.
Like I said, there's not many children in that neighborhood play around anymore, but there's a lot of traffic in the area with the hospital there.
Very good.
Okay? That's my concern, anyway.
All right, understood.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? If not, you have the option of coming back up to the mic and providing a rebuttal and maybe answering some of the questions.
As far as any additional traffic...
If you wouldn't mind just kind of addressing the board and speaking into the mic, of course.
Okay. Any, any traffic we're going to have is showing up for work and leaving at the end of the day. We go out for lunch here and there. I mean, I, you're talking about the employees and family members of, of my business, and the, the driveway is set back off of Kinsley Street onto the crossroad of Market Street. I've been to the building many times. I, I don't see it as, we're not coming out on, onto the intersection. We're coming out on Market Street, set at the back lot, line of that property, which I assume abuts your property, sir? We will endeavor to be as careful as anybody possible, but if you had patients coming in there being to see the doctor, you would still have cars coming in and out. We're not asking to use the building in any different way as it will just be an office for a business, you know? And everybody in the business is a family member.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
So, so just to confirm, and I'm looking at the application here, it says your total, excuse me, total number of employees is six, number of employees per shift is one. So how many people are really going to be in that building during the day? Is it just one or two?
During the day?
Yeah.
It'll be my daughter and myself usually.
So really, two people in the building?
Yeah.
And so you're six, your number six, that includes your, so it's not really six people in the building? Six people, four to five of which may be on the road?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You know, there, there may be days that we have a, a, a staff meeting or a, we have to do training with vendors for different things that come up in the code. There's a new process or a product that you have to get a certification, and the vendor will come and certify the four of us for a new refrigerant that has to be pumped down in a new way you have to do it. That might happen there, or it often happens at, at like the supply houses. So it's not like, again, we're, all the business happens outside anyways. I, you'll see my little minivan in and out the most if I have to go in and out to go do estimates because I'm the one that would come to your house and you say, hey, Ralph, I want a new boiler. I'll come out, visit with you, see what you need, go back to the office, put the quote together, and email you. So the most you'll see is my little minivan going in and out of there.
Okay. Any questions? Feel free to have a seat. Sir, if you'd like to, you are free to come back up and offer any rebuttal or have a last word or question if you wish.
I know, they, they claim to have these businesses that come in and claim there's only going to be a few vehicles coming in and out, but is this thing going to grow as time goes on to become a bigger business in that location? Where it's going to cause even more issues for that corner, for that intersection? I don't know. It's, like I said, it's, it's, it's a heavy traffic intersection, especially with St. Joe's Hospital being the main driveway there, and his driver just sit back off of Kinsley Street is going to, seems to be, to me, is going to cause some more issues. Now, if he's claimed that it's only going to be a few cars in and out during the day, it's going to have to be careful with that intersection. But if it's going to be a lot more vehicles, repair, repairing trucks and stuff like that coming in and out, it could cause some more problems. I, I don't know. I, I have, I have to back into my driveway, okay? And sometimes that takes time because of the traffic coming by there before I can get into my driveway. That's, this is almost adjacent to where his driveway is going to be, right adjacent, adjacent to my driveway, right? Also, across the street from that driveway, adjacent to it, is a three-car driveway there from apartment complex on that corner. They have to come in and out. And he's a truck driver that brings in, brings them some heavy equipment in there sometimes that he parks in the lot, and he's got to get in and out of there at times, too. Sometimes he does during the night anyway, which shouldn't be an issue, but you've got a three-apartment complex in that corner, and there is a three-car driveway that sits right adjacent to that. It's the, people are going to come out with all, it's traffic as well.
Okay.
So I'm just telling you that this is just going to add, possibly add some more problems in that corner.
I think, I think we understand your concern.
I've been here all my life. I see it getting worse, but I'm just concerned about that situation that could happen.
Understood.
It could evolve that way, you know?
Thank you. Okay. And is there, well, there is nobody else, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it up to the board for deliberations. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Shaw.
I actually have no concerns about this. I think that the applicant has, has represented that if, if anything, by all indications, it will actually be a lighter use, less traffic in this function as this kind of general office than the medical office, which, you know, my, my general thought is with the medical office, you're much more likely to have kind of consistent traffic throughout the, the day. So we're talking about generally, it sounds like one or two vehicles kind of there, one or two people there, limited times in and out, maybe once in a while, the, you know, the entire crew is there, so, you know, five, six vehicles, something like that. But none of this, to me, seems like there will be any sort of more significant usage. If anything, it seems like it will be a much more reduced usage, so. And, and I guess just for the concern, the butter, I mean, we, we do function as a quasi-judicial body. We take all testimony given to us as, as if it were, you know, basically kind of court-type testimony, so we, we go by what an application states and what an applicant tells us and through their testimony of what their intentions are and how they will run the business. And so we, we work to judge from that unless we have some concerns that we believe there's information that doesn't, you know, kind of jive with, with what's been presented to us, but I have every reason to, to take the applicant at his word and that the expectation is that it will be relatively light use for this office. I just also want to put that out there just because it's not always clear to everybody kind of exactly how we function and how we make our decisions, but, but we do take the testimony quite seriously and at face value unless, again, there's some opposition to the information that's, that's out there, so. But I'm definitely in support of this application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Neely.
So, so, so the world has changed in that you don't have a lot of the medical buildings that are springing up around hospitals. As we know, we've seen so many of them proliferate right, right down Amherst Street and Danny Webster Highway and, and any place that's, that's not close to a hospital. I'll be honest, I've never really paid a lot of attention to this building until, until this, this applicant or the application arrived. So, you know, I, if I was looking at it today, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to tell whether it was a medical building or a commercial building. It was very fascinating that the applicant showed us pictures of their current facility. Looks an awful lot like this. Let me take a look at it. And I do believe that based on the, the applicant, the way they have their business set up, the amount of traffic coming in and out of this building is going to be significantly less than a doctor's office where they usually have blocks of patients every 15 minutes. So let's say you have two to three offices, two to three rooms in there. I mean, you can work the math on how many, how many customers are coming in and out. That being said, hopefully the applicant has heard loud and clear that there, there are potential dangers coming in and out of that property, and I'm sure they'll take care of that going forward. So that being said, I, I am in favor of this application. I do believe that the applicant, I, I heard they've had this on the market for a year. That's long enough to tell me that there's nobody out there clamoring to get into this, this facility. So if these folks don't take it, it's probably going to sit there vacant for a while longer. That's not fair to the applicants or the owners, the owner of the property to, to sit on that waiting for somebody in the medical business to show up that, that just may never show up based on where the world is today.
Yeah, I would say I agree. I think all of us are familiar with this intersection. It is a busy intersection. You are right across, you know, from, from the hospital. It, it is a connecting point, you know, from East Hollis Street as, as well, but it is a fairly unique piece of property, you know, sitting there at a very busy intersection across from the hospital and with three street frontages. So it's, we have, again, we've heard the testimony, it's been vacant for a year. Total usage of this building is probably equal to or less just the staff who would have worked in this as a medical office building, much as the patients, so I think the overall impact is less. Any other thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Tan Weir LLC owner, Ralph DiBacco applicant, 171 Kinsley Street, Sheet 122, Lot 235, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 97, to convert use of property from approved use of medical doctor's office to a general office use. This is in the RA zone, Ward Six. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because we have found that this property will actually have less use than what it had in the previous incantation and the fact that we do believe it's going to stay vacant longer due to the change in the number of required medical offices in the general area there. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed because this, this is going to be a commercial building. It has a very large parking lot in the back and is set up to have customers coming in and out, which is similar to a medical office. Granting the variance would do substantial justice in that it's been on the market for a year, and we do not, based on, on testimony, think that there are any other potential uses for that building. Otherwise, the, the owner's going to be stuck with that building. We do not have any testimony on the value of the surrounding property changing, and the unnecessary hardship for the applicant is, as we talked about, the needs for businesses to build around St. Joe's that are specifically medical buildings is not there anymore as the world has been changing significantly from when this building was first put together. It has been vacant for a year, and we do feel that the applicant would be moving a, a commercial business into this that is semi-similar to a medical while having less traffic generated that would affect the, the traffic of the neighbors. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? And your variance request passes unanimously? Just as you heard earlier, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so just be mindful of that. And welcome to Nashua. And the next and final case is the application of H.A.R. Creek Cattle Company LLC, John S. Lewis applicant, 76 Lake Street, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 139, to convert historical electrical contractor shop to an auto parts and supply store. I have a strong feeling you are representing the applicant.
Wise chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman, attorney with Prunier &amp; Prohlman, uh, here in Nashua. Um, I've just handed out a, uh, G.I.S. plan of our neighborhood. I'll, I'll speak to that when we get to the hardship criteria. Mr. Chairman, um, on behalf of the Heart Creek Cattle Company and Car Parts of Nashua, which I'll explain, we are here seeking to use variance, um, to allow, um, Car Parts of Nashua to run as an auto supply store, um, at 76 Lake Street. Um, your, um, applicant, um, is Car Parts of Nashua. Uh, the application, uh, was written by, um, John Lewis. He's the general manager of Car Parts of Nashua, and he didn't put the name Car Parts of Nashua on it, but that's why we're here. Car Parts of Nashua is currently located at, in Railroad Square, um, 15 to 17 Railroad Square, the Sterns Block. Everything in my life relates to the stable, which is now Panucci's, and then the building across the, uh, across the street, and then the next brick, brick building is the Sterns Block. They've been there forever, and they, uh, seek to move out because it's a lousy building. Um, and so, we have the opportunity to move to, uh, 76 Lake Street to run the car part, um, facility, Car Parts of Nashua, um, business. Heart Creek Cattle, um, Company is the name, um, by which Lauren Morris purchased the property in 2021. Uh, if you don't know Lauren Morris, you've seen his trucks all around town, electrical contractor, um, who in 2021 bought the building, renovated the building, moved in for a bit, but then realized the building was far too large for what they need. They're now renting a much smaller, um, facility in Hudson, and so now they're looking to lease out to, uh, Car Parts of Nashua. Um, I, the gist of our argument tonight is that there's always been some type of business, um, at this, uh, facility, uh, very similar to what Car, um, Car Parts of Nashua is proposing to do. And, Mr. Chairman, um, I, uh, first moved to Nashua in 1964, when I was about six months old, and my parents rented an apartment at 11 Daytona in Little Florida. Um, and ever since then, I can remember there being some business at 76 Lake Street, right? And the title will bear this out, and if you will indulge me, um, because the title has an interesting little twist. I represented Lauren Morris when he purchased the property in 2021, and so I went back to my title file, and just to briefly run you through the title, just to prove my point that there's always been a business there, um, in the 1920s, this is, this is, this is the part I like, in the 1920s, Balcom?
Tony Prohlman?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna refuse myself from this case. I'm actually currently doing business with Mr. Lauren Morris, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to...
Very good.
Very good.
It's a good call, thank you. Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, are you okay proceeding with four members?
Yes, yes, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. Um, just as a quick aside, does the board still have that rule that we have to proceed regardless, um, of the number of members?
I mean, we... Yes, we do, yes, you're right.
Okay, all right. Well, then I object, but I'll still go forward. Anyway, coming back to my title, um, because this is fun. In 1920s, Balcom Nashua Ice Company sold, um, 76 Lake Street and property across Lake Street, going down to Sandy Pond, to the New England Cities Ice Company. So, there's been some, something going on there since at least the 1920s. In 1957, New England Cities Ice Company sold the property to the Taggart Fuel Company. Uh, and that sale included, um, conveyed all the refrigerating machinery, tanks, pumps, meters, air compressors, and motors now used to operate the ice business, including, together with the right to fill up the pond on said premises to the extent necessary to create ice, all right? So, it was conveyed to Taggart Ice Company, and now we have Taggart Ice in South Nashua, right? So, it's kind of an interesting twist. Tonight, in the 70s, Taggart Fuel Company conveys the property to Ralph Pill. The, the, the actual title is, is the name of a realty trust, but Ralph Pill operated, um, at this site from the 1970s, and what my understanding is Ralph Pill did is very similar to what Car Parts of Nashua was proposing to do. They supplied electric contractors, uh, they had a little bit of a retail component, not huge, but you could walk in and, and go buy some electric parts, but they would drive their, um, delivery trucks to, um, contractor sites, to job sites. Contractors would come to the site, pick up electrical equipment, um, and then go off to the jobs. Um, and then going forward, um, 1985, Ralph Pill is purchased by Northeastern Electrical Distributors, which really did the same thing as Ralph Pill, which is under a different name. Then 2021, Lauren Morris purchased the property as Heart Creek Cattle Company. So, the title bears out my six-month-old memory that there's always been something, um, going on at the site, and I would submit to you that it's, uh, what Ralph Pill did over the years is very similar to what, um, Car Parts of Nashua is seeking to do. Now, Car Parts of Nashua, you have the, um, application, just to kind of fill in the blanks. Um, Car Parts of Nashua supplies to garages, dealerships, um, re, auto repair shops, um, over the course of the day. Um, they have, um, eight to 10 employees, uh, who would drive in their personal cars to the site, get in the trucks and vans that stay on-site, and if you, if you're familiar with this, if you've driven by, to the right of the building, there's a fence, and the backyard is gonna be used for storage of the vehicles, both personal vehicles as they come to the site, and then the, um, trucks and vans, um, that will be operating during the day. Um, the supplies will be coming and going over the course of the day. Um, the site is supplied by the warehouse, um, in Plastow. Um, there'll be roughly, you know, two deliveries a day as necessary. Typical retail hours, um, Monday through Friday, half-day Saturday, close on Sunday. Again, eight to 10 employees. Um, and there's, there will be a retail component to this, like you can go in and go buy a battery, uh, you go in and go buy some belts or whatnot, uh, for your cars. Uh, the retail component is not a huge part of the business, roughly 10% of the business. And from what I understand from Lauren Morris, who was familiar with Ralph Pill, Ralph Pill had a very similar breakdown. They had a retail, a small retail component and much larger, um, distribution, uh, network. Uh, Car Parts of Nashua, um, has, well, Car Parts, their, um, uh, their, their overall business has 20 stores in the New Hampshire, Maine, and Mount St. Louis, um, region. It happens to be their 50th anniversary, um, and so they are looking to move out of their current site, um, which is having all kinds of building issues to their, um, to 76 Lake Street. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm gonna supplement the, um, supplement the application that came to you, um, because the application that came to you, they spoke about their needs, but didn't necessarily address the, uh, the variance criteria. So, uh, with speaking to the variance criteria, public interest and the spirit of the ordinance are very, uh, similar, the two, um, sides of the same coin. Uh, the proposed use is not gonna be changed in the character of the neighborhood when we consider that the historic use, um, of the site. Uh, we're not gonna be threatening any public health or safety or welfare, running out public rights. Um, the, allowing the use of the building will be a substantial justice certainly to Lauren Morris, so he can, uh, have the building being used. It's going to be a huge upgrade to the, uh, owners and employees of Car Parts of Nashua. They can get out of Railroad Square and have a good site. It's centrally located, close to the highway, close to Main Street. It, it works on, on many levels. And so you compare a lot of bu, pluses with, for the owner and the applicant against really no negatives to the town, and so the balance kind of weighs in favor of the, of the applicant in this case. I don't know if you're familiar with the building before and after, uh, but it was kind of dumpy before, and Lauren has poured a lot of money into this site. It looks great. Um, we see that there's gonna be no impacted property values. Um, then, speaking of this, as to the hardship, the lots, and that's, that's why I gave you that G.I.S. sheet. If you take a look at that, we're surrounded by Lake Street in front of us, obviously, but the Corville property kind of wraps all around us. Um, and so, there's not a lot you can do with this, with this property. It's very unique, uh, property in that regard. It's an odd triangle with the, with the existing building. And given the unique circumstances of this particular building, um, and considering the history of the use of the site, we don't see that there's a fair and reasonable, uh, reason to prohibit, um, Car Parts of Nashua cooperating in the local business district where we're located. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, John Lu, uh, Stan Lewis, um, is here tonight, as is Lauren Morris, to answer any questions as well.
Any questions from the board? So, I've got a couple, if I may.
Sure.
Um, so, so there seems to be this, I don't know if you're familiar with this, this odd little triangle piece?
Yeah, yeah.
That's kind of wedged in there, and it looks as though the building overlaps onto that little triangle.
Those two pieces should be merged. Um, the historically, uh, the chain of title conveyed 76 Lake Street with two parcels, one teeny little sliver that you're talking about, and then the larger triangular piece.
Could you just talk a little bit about, um, how vehicles will park, and between employees and potential customers?
Well, okay, employees arriving, and perhaps, um, Stan could answer this better, but I'm answering, employees arriving will, they get, the fence will be open, they're gonna pull in the back, park for the day, take out a truck, load up out front, there's a garage door out front, and then take off, um, to deliver the products. But if I may, um, but maybe, maybe I can hold that question, um, have, have that likely better answered?
Sure.
All right? Did you have, did you have another?
Just one more, but I, I assume that, uh, in looking at the aerial, the, uh, that appears to be a right-of-way behind the property, there's vehicles parked back there?
No, that's the, um, it's an old railroad bed. That's now owned by Corville.
Very good.
If I may, how the circulation is gonna go.
Good morning, gentlemen. Stan Lewis, I'm the general manager for that whole set of stores in the Plastow DC. So, in terms of the parking, right now, the current location we have, we have no employee parking, no customer parking. So, our drivers now actually come to park somewhere to get to walk to the store, then they have to get in a company vehicle, and we have our company vehicles parked at Front Street that we're paying additional funds for because we can't park our vehicles at the building. So, our plan is the employees will park in the gated area when they get there for work. Our delivery vehicles will be in the back gated area as well, uh, and then they will leave, and the vans, the biggest vehicle the store has is Kia Sedonias and a couple of Chrysler Country Vans, and a couple of Ford Rangers. So, the delivery truck, once a day, from our warehouse in Plastow, is a 24-foot box truck, and the second delivery is in an Econoline van in the afternoon. Uh, so in terms of the parking, it's set up so that customers can park straight on to the building, and there is room on the left-hand side of the building in a parking area for employees and behind the building as well in that gated area.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? I give you my, just stating your name and address.
Sorry, Lauren Morris, uh, 27 Chester Street, Nashua, um, the owner of the building. Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the nature of Ralph Pill and Northeast Electrical Distributors as the history of, as an electrician, I used to go there and buy parts before I bought the building. Um, they were almost, uh, Northeast Electrical Distributors bought the business from Ralph Pill, but not the building. Um, the family held on to that, but it was exactly the same business through that here the whole time. They even kept the employees and everything. Um, it, it was a limited amount of retail, but there was always people in there for retail, um, to the point where even after I bought the business, and I'm not a, I don't distribute, I, we do electrical work as a contractor, almost every day that I was at that building, somebody would stop in to buy parts, like some homeowner, some old-timer or something. And I'd, you, I'd always tell them, hey, it's not a, we're not a supply house anymore, but, um, you looking for a box? Let me see if I got one, you know? I try and find one, but, um, just, I figured I'd share that.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions for me specifically?
We're good, thank you. Anybody else you'd like to speak in favor? Anybody with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Boucher?
Uh, so I'm one of those, I don't know, battle, uh, I, I, you, when I first moved to Nashua, I definitely used, uh, Ralph Pill. Uh, it was convenient because I live in the Bishkerton area, so it was convenient for me. Um, so, I've always known that as some type of a business. I never found it to be, um, uh, overbearing like, like, uh, so packed that it, it was, you know, traffic was being backed up. It was never really like that. Um, there was times where it's been busy, but, um, I've always recognized that, uh, even though it looked tight, it, it was never, uh, you know, hazard driving down Lake Street. So, uh, so I think that the business, from, from my recollection and, you know, again, living near there and driving always by there, um, I never, uh, saw it as a, as a detriment to, to the neighborhood. Um, again, there's several different, uh, things going on on Lake Street, as you know, and, uh, so, um, I, I'm gonna support the application. I think that, um, again, it's just, uh, it's a different product, but it's doing the same thing, um, as it was before. So, um, again, uh, the building looks great now because, uh, you're correct, the building kind of was in little disrepair. I think they, uh, did a nice job. So, again, I think they've improved the neighborhood, uh, and I think, um, that the business will fit in just like the other businesses did. And, and again, um, nobody's here in opposition, so that tells me that, again, um, there is not, there's, there's not an issue with this business existing in this location. So, so with that, I'm gonna support the application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Patrick?
This seems like a very reasonable request. The use is essentially the same. Um, I, I don't have a reason to oppose this.
Okay, um, given that, um, I think if there's no objection, uh, I can take this one. I'd make a motion that the application of Heart Creek Cattle Company, LLC, owner, John S. Lewis applicant, for 76 Lake Street, requesting a use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 139, to convert historical electric, electric contractor shop into an auto parts and supply store be approved. We find that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because this is an ex, long-time commercial building. There'd be no change to the character of the area, and based on testimony of how it would operate, uh, we see, don't, I, we do not find that it would be injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed for the same reasons. The granting of the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow reasonable use of the, the property, and, uh, there is no harm that, um, has been alleged to the public nor that we would find. Uh, we, uh, find that it would not diminish, uh, diminish surrounding property values. There's been no evidence, um, to that effect. Uh, and we find that the unnecessary hardship, uh, the special conditions of the property are, one, just the, uh, size and shape of the property, and the fact that this has been an existing commercial, uh, use for as long as we can tell. Therefore, there is no fair and substantial relationship between the specific requirements of the ordinance as applied to this property, and that the use itself is a reasonable use. So, for those reasons, I make a motion that the application for the variance be granted. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion? All those in favor? Variance is granted? Thank you. And Mr. Shaw will be rejoining the board. So, that takes us to review of the upcoming agenda. Does anybody see anything on the agenda, uh, that would be a regional impact?
No, there's not, nope. Nope.
Not that I can see either.
Pretty short agenda.
Yeah. It's a pretty short agenda. And so with that, um, approval of the minutes of our prior meeting, which I dig them up, I can find the date. Uh, has anybody have, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Any changes, questions, concerns? Mr. Patrick?
We've got a couple of mine.
We're counting on you.
Um, let's see, um, page four, this, um, uh, let's see, the first pair, the, where it's underlined, Alexander Malvorn, um, the second sentence there, after straightforward, I think we wanna say, comma, he, um, uh, oh, sorry, after pretty straightforward, I think we wanna say, he is looking to...
He is.
Yeah.
And he is?
And he is, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, uh, the third sentence after that, intend should be plural, so intends. Um, and then, uh, page six... And then page six, in the motion, let's see, one, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph, second line, I think believe should be believes, because we're talking about the board believing.
Yeah.
And then page eight, the very last line, there is an extra "the." I think we want to take out the "the" owing.
Mr. Boucher stated that owing to the special conditions.
And, yes, I think, I think that's all hit. Excellent. Anybody else? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of April 22nd? Mr. Neely, do we have a second? I'm sorry, you have a?
Yep, just like to make a motion to approve, with the exception of the changes as noted by Mr. Patrick.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. So do we have anything else this evening to address?
I don't think so.
If not, motion to adjourn.
No motion.
Second. Mr. Patrick, I think we're all in favor. And who wins?
I think Mr. Falk got it.
Who said 7:42?
I said 7:42.
Oh, nice. So it's like Price is Right, you didn't go over.